We'll call this meeting in order. Note the presence of a quorum with all commissioners present. I'd invite you to please stand. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, guest staff, visitors present with us here this afternoon. First item would be the approval of the agenda. Commissioners?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion of approval. Commissioner Sample's support.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Labiscia. Discussion. Are you in on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion's carried. Agenda is hereby adopted. Again, welcome to everybody. We'll begin. I'll turn it over to Andrew Carlstrom, who is the Director of Environmental Services, and he will give an overview and review of the proposed ordinance changes. From there, we'll remand it to the board, and at that point, we'll open it up to citizens' public comment. We will be adhering to the rules that we do in our normal board meetings for citizens' comment. So with that, Andrew Carlstrom.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for being in attendance today on this beautiful afternoon. So what we want to talk about here today, we last spoke on November 21st of 2024. I believe many of you were there. What we're proposing and discussing today is very different, very different from what we just kind of touched on in November of last year. So we are here to talk about a shoreline management ordinance. The Aiken County Shoreland Management Ordinance is our most comprehensive ordinance. It's had over three decades, three decades of lessons learned, changes. You can see this seven different amendments that have been made through the years since 1992, when it was adopted. And I just want to recognize those of you who serve on the ordinance committee, which is just an internal committee, and those of you that were invited to join us through this process. I want to recognize that. I want to recognize my staff as well, the Environmental Services Planning and Zoning staff, and their efforts to continuously educate the public. Again, Aiken County has 2 million, over 1.2 million acres, over 400 lakes. I want to recognize soil and water as well, and, you know, putting on shoreline workshops, contractor workshops, realtor workshops, these all happen in the springtime. We're always making continuous improvements on our website. And so I just wanted to preface everything with that. So Aiken County does have a statutory obligation to preserve and enhance the quality of the surface waters in Aiken County lakes. We also have a statutory obligation to conserve the economic and natural environmental values of the shorelands, as well as a statutory obligation for Aiken County to provide for the wise use of waters and related land resources. So with that backdrop, that's what the ordinance committee attempted to do as we met over the past five months, five or six months. We met once or twice a month, and so that kind of gives you a background. Okay, this was the big question when we received public comments. So we had a press release, a public comment, written public comment, period. We'll have two more public hearings, so this will be two more public hearings, one in front of the Planning Commission, as well as the county board before you. So why are we proposing these amendments? Well, the need for administrative and organizational updates. I think a lot of, some of the language in the current 2018 model of the shoreline management ordinance do not match Minnesota statutes. As many of you know, for example, there's 14 different types of cannabis businesses now in the state of Minnesota. So that, we have data sensors that are trends, different things. We didn't even have a definition for easement in there. Practical, the word practical difficulty has replaced the word hardship. So really, that was the main goal, was to get it, to refine the language, get it to understand and read maybe a little better, improve the organization and the table of contents. The second one was, I was charged, as well as the Environmental Services Planning and Zoning staff, was charged to optimize land use ordinances. So we were charged with the strategic plan to analyze current land use ordinances to identify where the county's requirement exceed state statute. Currently, we all know the DNR model ordinance is from 1989. That's the year I graduated high school. That's a long time ago. It may not seem like the 80s are that long ago, but 1989, the state model ordinance was revisited and the rules were reviewed, but no one could come to an agreement in 2006, so it was dropped. It has not been reviewed since 2006. So it's a hot, it's a contentious, very complicated ordinance. So just a little background there. So the strategic plan that the Board of Commissioners approved, this was one of the tasks that I was tasked with. So with that in mind, the ordinance committee sat down and started discussing and considering things like increasing, do we want to look at increasing the size of water-oriented accessory structures? You know, the Minnesota rule allows 400, you know, Aiken County, 120, so it's pretty small. It's modest. Okay, some other things, sand blankets, should we introduce those? Those are allowed over in Crow Wing. How does that work? Well, all that being said, that was all not recommended. So what you're going to see before you is very, very minor changes. So with that, and the next slide. Okay, so some comments that we received. So we received seven letters with, many with good suggestions and many which I'll take and run past the ordinance committee, and I think we'll look at those seriously. We received also 40 to 50 form letters with adjectives like downgrading, rolling back, weakening, going backward. So you be the judge, and obviously the county board. The DNR has provided their comments. They have a very strict ordinance review process. We have to get approval from the DNR. And is Jake here today? Excellent. Jake made it. So thank you, Jake, for being here today. So we currently are at a conditional approval stage. We've got two more steps, but we have a conditional approval stage where the DNR stands right now, as of today. Okay, so if I just want to, I always want to go over the form letter that was sent out and just want to, it was addressed to myself as director and as well as the Aiken County Board. Dear Aiken County Environmental Services and Board of Commissioners, I oppose downgrading the Aiken County Lakeshore Ordinance shoreline regulations. I'm very disappointed that you would consider rolling back the Aiken County Lakeshore Ordinance shoreline regulations. These ordinance regulations were put in place to keep our lakes healthy by protecting water quality, fish spawning areas, and lake ecosystems. And my response was, the Aiken County Ordinance Committee has been meeting, reviewing, and refining recommendations for amendments to the Aiken County Shoreland Management Ordinance since November of 24. The proposed amendments are administrative, organizational, with one minor change to shoreline regulations in Aiken County. The second, the next paragraph, even so, our current regulations aren't enough, as lake health in Aiken County has been decreasing the past 10 years. What's more, Minnesota also now has more lakes on the impaired water list than ever. That's why other counties in our state are working to increase their ordinance regulation above state standards. And my response was, the Aiken County Ordinance Committee did a side-by-side comparison with DNR state model ordinance, and Aiken County will remain more restrictive in many areas, such as small water-oriented accessory structures, sizes. No sand blankets allowed in the shore impact. Strict vegetation management limited to 33% or 40 feet on the shore impact zone. Riprap only allowed if evidence of active erosion, restrictive patio requirements, and restrictive recreational camping vehicle standards, to name a few. The next paragraph, the proposed changes to downgrade Aiken County's Lakeshore Ordinance shoreline regulations, such as easing restrictions on vegetation removal. My response, not accurate, as we have refined language and added a diagram for better understandability in Section 722. Permitting sand blankets, not accurate, as this was discussed, however, the ordinance committee decided against adding this to the ordinance. And finally, an increasing impervious surface limits will harm lake health in several interconnected ways, not accurate. We have not changed maximum impervious surface from 25%, which is the state standard, it's a state law, but only are proposing to increase structural impervious from 15 to 18%. Number one, vegetative removal, vegetation removal, loss of natural filtration, erosion control, harm. Natural shoreline vegetation acts as buffer that filters pollutants, stabilizes soil. Removing it weakens this protection. Impact without the buffer erosion increases sediment, along with nutrients like phosphorus washes into the lake. This again worsens water quality and accelerates lake aging, eutrophication. No change to current standards of vegetation removal in Section 7, but rather understandable language and an illustration, which is located in Appendix 5. Number two, sand blankets, disruption of natural habitat, harm. Applying sand blankets, the practice of adding a layer of sand to shoreline alters the natural shoreline and lake bottom, smothering native aquatic plants and animal habitats. Impact, this can damage fish spawning areas, reduce biodiversity, and increase turbidity as the sand shifts in the water, making lakes murkier and less healthy. No change, not legally allowed in the Aiken County Shoreland Management. So again, the ordinance committee decided not to pursue that, so no sand blankets. Number three, increased impervious surface runoff surfaces, more runoff, harm, more impervious surface, buildings, patios, driveways, reduces land's ability to absorb rainwater. Instead, water runs off quickly into the lake, carrying pollutants like oil on fertilizers, pet waste, and sediment. Impact, the runoff can fuel algae blooms, degrade water clarity, and reduce oxygen levels, which stresses or kills fish and aquatic life. No change, maximum total impervious surface coverage in Aiken County shoreline is 25%, which is the state model ordinance requirement. And finally, the last paragraph from the form letter was, overall consequences for Aiken County lakes, if the shoreline ordinance lakeshore regulations are downgraded, decline in water quality, reduce fish and wildlife populations, increase algae blooms, and invasive species, strained ecosystems. Please vote no when considering weakening Aiken County's shoreline ordinance. So finally, what we are proposing, many of you have read, you've gone through, and again, we appreciate your comments. So this is the proposed amendments. I don't think I need to go through those. Most of the comments will probably be on that. So, well, why don't I go ahead? Additions to and revision of definitions in accordance with statute. So again, many of them, you're going to see cannabis in there, you're going to see solar. We changed vacation home rental to vacation short-term rental. So just different things like that. Section 425, so that kind of goes hand in hand with the definitions, so that's updated. And I want to recognize Shannon Wiebush for her job on, her excellent job on doing the organization and new formatting. The proposed digital copy is going to have hyperlinks, so you can go right to the state statute, you can go right to another Aiken County land use ordinance. Very, very convenient. And Section 6.14, building coverage increased to 18%. We already have addressed that, from 15. That goes back to 2005, when that initially was, so more discussion on that. Section 722, vegetation alterations, we'll see an administrative change. And we can talk about that as things go. Section 752, again, that's just a coverage, again, of 18%, requesting to go to 18% from 15 on structural impervious coverage. And finally, just an open space and common open space administrative change, that is the proposed changes. So. And finally, estimated timeline, so we just ended our 30-day press release, written public comments, and here we are today in red. And three, it just depends on how many changes and adjustments we make to what we're having. So this will go before the Planning Commission, either September 15th or October 20th. I'm thinking it'll probably be October. And then finally, that's a public hearing, so the public obviously will be able to comment. And then a public hearing, a first and second reading for the Aiken County Board in October, November, maybe push it to December timeframe. So again, this is a comprehensive, I don't know if any of you have, it's about, you know, a quarter inch thick or more, it's more than that, it's probably 3/8ths or so, almost half inch thick. So it's a very comprehensive ordinance. At this time, I think I've kind of introduced it. I'd like if, Mr. Chair, if it's okay if I bring Jake Free up from the DNR and just maybe some quick comments on what the DNR.
Welcome, Jake. Appreciate your attendance here.
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Andrew does a good job of highlighting some of the things I was going to talk about, and that's not really fair. I was going to talk about that.
Sold you thunder. Sold you thunder.
So, no, I do want to echo that, again, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jake Free. I'm an area hydrologist with the Minnesota DNR. My work areas are Crow Wing and Aiken Counties, and I've been in this role for about two and a half years. So it's been a pleasure working with Crow Wing County. First, I want to say the early coordination on this with Andrew and his staff is second to none. So it wasn't like I got a notice 10 days before and say, hey, we're making a few changes, you just show up, and I'm like, what's going on? He is excellent, early coordination. We've had meetings, I know, was it a year ago? It was with Paul and I and others?
That was last fall, November.
Yeah, it was the last fall. So there has been a lot of great discussion. A lot of the times when we have early coordination, there's also education about the current state of our public waters. How are we doing? What percent of our shorelines are being converted? What does the science say? So I think a lot of the early coordination hasn't been a bureaucratic waste of time kind of thing. It's been a lot of education outreach and relationship building. So I know that's a lot of fluff, but it's just true, so I appreciate that, and it's been great to work with Andrew's staff. The riprap standards in Aiken County are tremendously working well. We have a great working relationship. Riprap, where it's been unlawful, has been removed, and we've really moved the needle on that, and we really appreciate that early coordination. So with that being said, all of the changes that are being proposed do meet minimum state shoreline rules. There are a number of provisions in this ordinance that go above and beyond the state's minimum shoreline rules. So we don't look at the shoreline rules as that's the best you could possibly do. We look at that as the minimum benchmark. So we appreciate that. I do want to go through one of the comments we had and talk a little bit about that if I could. This is going to take a couple minutes. One of the comments I made was not a proposal from Aiken County to change, but sometimes what happens when we open up an ordinance to make some revisions, sometimes we'll catch something that's important enough where maybe we missed it some earlier time, didn't catch it, but if we find something that we think, you know, I'm not sure this meets the minimum kind of state rule on this, we'll bring it up and have a conversation about it. So we did make one comment about the definition of a toe and a top of a bluff. Did anybody have a chance to, for fun, read that comment at all? It's okay, it's okay. If you didn't, I just want to, Mr. Chair, I did bring 10 copies of this very brief, I will not go into detail, but hand them up.
Thank you.
Chris, is there a way we can put that up there? Too short, I don't know. Yep.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
So now that you have that, basically, I'll just kind of cut to the nuts and bolts of it. The current definition that Aiken County has for the toe and the top of the bluff, which are the start and the end of where we have these protective setbacks from bluffs, so that we're maintaining visual quality and we don't have significant soil loss and erosion on those sensitive areas, includes a part that says, where visually observed a clearly identifiable break in the slope from gentler to steep slope. If that break isn't there, then they go to the state's definition. So there's a part in that definition that Aiken County has that is not in the state's definition. The state basically says toe of bluff is the lower end of a 50-foot segment measured from the ground with an average slope of 18%. So there's that added line in there. So why does that matter? That's what I'm trying to get at. Well, who cares? This, as you can see from this diagram, this is a helpful document that the DNR produced in 2021. It isn't a change to the rule. It isn't a document where we started making unpromulgated rulemaking for fun and made this document. It was a helpful illustration. So currently, right now, the way Aiken County has it described is, can everyone see where it says, there's that vertical blue line on your, there's that vertical blue line, and at the top, it kind of says that 18%? You see where the top of that bluff is that you can visually see, or it looks like, that's the top of a hill? Currently, right now, the language would suggest that you could call the top of the bluff the top of that sharp break. Does that make sense? I know it's like a lot of in the weeds. But the state's definition would say it actually needs to be a 50-foot segment of where the slope is at or less than 18%, and then it's 50, so it would be further restrictive. So this is the best diagram, without getting crazy, that I could find. And so that's our concern, is that, I don't believe Aiken County, by the way, I just want to put this on the record, is trying to do anything or trying to unscrupulously modify. I think probably, I don't want, Andrew, I don't know, probably was a helpful tool to help people in the field. But the concern we have is that by calling it the top of a visual estimate of where that bluff ends is going to potentially result in a smaller impact zone for our bluffs and structures getting closer to it. So I won't go, does anybody have any questions about what I just said? I was trying to be as helpful as I can to talk about it.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
I'm sorry. Yeah. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say, unless there was any other questions. I do appreciate your time this morning, and I'll be here in the audience for a bit, but I'll yield back my time. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Jake.
Thank you, sir.
Andrew?
Yes, sir. Back to you, Mr. Chair. Did you?
You're on deck.
I'm on deck.
Any further comments that you have?
No, sir. Nope.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to remand it to the Board of Commissioners for comments, questions, discussion. Subsequent to this, we'll open it up for public comment. Commissioners, anything you want to add?
No, my question is on the bluffs with what he just said.
And this Commissioner Sample, for those online.
Commissioner Sample here, Fort district. I've got some questions on the bluff, but that would take way too long. I'll have a meeting with Andrew afterwards to get a better understanding on how I'm understanding we're doing bluffs.
Any other comments from Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Labiscia also sits on the ordinance committee.
Yep. Commissioner Labiscia, I just wanted to make a couple comments as a member of the ordinance committee and the process that we went through. So first off, I want to thank everybody that's here and being involved in the process. This is what we like to see as representatives, the people that are coming out to voice their opinions and their concerns. So through this process, we did look at a lot of potential changes to our shoreline zone ordinance, and I was one, I'm always going to be a person as a representative, if there's any responsible way we can find to give people who own property in our county more opportunity to do the things that they want to with their own property in our county, I'm going to look into those options. But again, the key word is responsibly. One of our biggest assets in Aiken County is our public waters, and we are obligated to protect those waters. So through the process, I, full disclosure, I was all in for making some big changes and increasing building size and all this, but that's why we do this process. Through the process, we had input from our shoreline owners, we had input from the DNR, we had input from our Soil and Water Conservation District, we had input from all sorts of different places. And I've always been a person that says, one of a person's biggest strength is knowing what they don't know. Knowing shoreline ordinance impacts on waters is something I didn't know. So all of this information was extremely helpful to me, and as you can see through the process, we really reeled back on some of the changes that we were bringing forward. So I just wanted to give some insight on the process, my take on it, what I learned, and what we're bringing out of it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Last call for any further comment. At this point in time, we'll open it up for any citizens' public comment. We will adhere to the rules that we normally do. Limit of five minutes. One person speaks one time, limit five minutes, and we mildly enforce these, just kind of a general guideline to maintain, well, organization, I guess. And as mentioned, subsequent to today's meeting, as Mr. Carl, as Andrew indicated, it'll be remanded to Planning and Zoning, and from there, September, October, a public hearing. Depending upon what happens there, it'll be remanded back to the Board of Commissioners again for a first and second reading, along with another official public hearing, at which time it would be up consideration for adoption. So you know the chronology of the events here, citizens' public comment? We'd ask if you could please approach the podium and state your name. Are there any public comments?
Thank you. I didn't see you peed behind me. Hi, I'm Becky Suvde. I know many of you, former wetland specialists with the county, and I did send in comments, and I know they don't get read today. So I'm very pleased to hear that you're sticking to what this proposed changes are, because on the VRBO ordinance, which I had spoken out, that was, I don't know, a year ago, it seemed public comment was such that the planning, zoning and zoning changed the ordinance proposal to the board, and then at the board, they completely added in everything that was taken out, which was very disconcerting to me. To me, that was the public had spoken, planning and zoning responded, and I just really was disappointed at that. And I'm getting the impression that would not happen this time, because, you know, this is, we are commenting on this proposed ordinance. Some of the concerns I did have, and you might have read them, is removing the 1/3 of the trees and 1/3 of the shrubs when you talk about vegetation management. That understory layer is very important for both, you know, shoreline anchoring, shading, and it's probably the next generations of trees. So taking that language out, I didn't think was a very smart thing to do. I think it would be nice to keep that in there. And otherwise, the changes did seem pretty, you know, obviously, you have to change your definitions when you need to, but it is, I've heard for so many years, crowing louses, crowing louses, ice skating louses, whatever. It's, Aiken County can be a leader, not a follower. We have very, very much appreciated lakes, and I own the lake every bit as much as anybody who lives on the lake does. So my opinion is as important as somebody who pays, you know, who owns a lake property, because I use the lakes, too. My kayak is pretty low-impact, but again, it's something, you're protecting a public resource, and I think these changes are very, very realistic. I would still tweak a few things, but I appreciate the scope of them. Thanks.
Thanks, Becky. Welcome back, too, Becky.
Oh, I'm not staying.
No committee?
Commissioner, council commissioners in general, thank you very much for your time today. I'll be brief in my comments.
And your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Robert, last name Carls, K-A-R-L-S. I'm out on Cedar Lake. I noted how many letters you received in opposition to the changes, Mr. Carlstrom. Did you receive any letters in support? Did you receive any letters in support?
No, nothing in support, but they were just mostly, it was open for public comment.
Great. I echo a lot of the comments. I think that there was some alarm amongst those on lake shore over some of the initial discussions. And I appreciate, I keep calling you council member, I apologize, Commissioner LaVisca's comments on allowing people to do what they want to do with their property. I echo a certain level of freedom that we should have with our own properties. The difficulty comes with the, it's an old English story of the tragedy of the commons, where in England, people were allowed to graze their cattle in the commons area of the village, and somebody decided that they could put more cattle on there, and eventually it ruined the commons for all of them. The lakes are our commons. That's what we're here to talk about. And the same exact model fits here. Any changes to the lake shore, and specifically on the vegetation alterations in our vegetation requirements are utmost concern to me because runoff into the lakes creates a tremendous amount of impairment. I think you've probably all seen maps of our state. This is the different areas of our state. In the southern part of the state below that red line, those lakes down there, many of them are pea-soup green. It's not what we want Aiken County to be. The lakes up on the Canadian Shield, they're great. It's a different geology, different development. In between is that transition zone, and Aiken County sits right in that area. And you can see some of the coloring on this map on nutrient-impaired lakes. We're in an area that's on that front, pushing back and forth. We have to preserve the quality and character of our lakes. And I say that not because of just my own self-interest, because we're all just here temporarily. We're stewards. We're here for a short period of time. This guy, right here, my assistant that I brought with, is the next group that are going to come up to help take care of our lakes, and I want them to start off on the best possible footing. As you consider in the future, any additional changes or something like that, I would like to have the opportunity to participate and see a little bit more of an outreach. We talked about process. I sit on the Aiken County Lakes and Rivers Association, and I've met with many of you. You've come to join us at our meetings and talk to us, tell us what you're doing, get feedback from us. This came at us out of left field. No one met with us to discuss any of the specific ideas you've had over the last six months in the level of detail that, some of the things that were being proposed. There's some discussion of different ideas, but when you have a tremendous opportunity to get input from stewards of all of those lakes that are members of Aclara, and I would just encourage you in the future to make sure you come in, try them out on us, talk to us about it. There are some good things in here. I noted specifically that in my comments, that was one of the seven, I guess, that gave specific comments, but there are some good things that you've got in here. I agree. I'm not against change. But let's seek a process that makes sure we can all contribute to that discussion in a good, open way, as you indicated, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again, too.
Thanks.
Pat?
Ladies, gentlemen. Hi. Patrick Murphy. I'm president of Aiken County Lakes and Rivers. Thanks, Bob. You sounded pretty good there, giving us some endorsements. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So, you know, when I first heard about this, the shoreline, looking at it, shoreline revisit type of thing, I was kind of excited to say, wow, you know, let's see what we can do. But, you know, one of the things that I've known since I've moved up here, I'll go, I should, I, I'll back up then. I'm from St. Paul, grew up in St. Paul. Our lakes weren't very nice. Como Lake was tough. You could never swim in that. So I never learned how to swim until I moved up here. And I just think that the, Lake Jarvis is, was our drinking water in St. Paul, and I felt sorry for the people in Minneapolis because they had the Mississippi, and that was worse yet because we used to play down there. But clean water. You know, I think that everybody wants it. Everybody go along with the fact that we need clean water. And in 1983, built a house in Lakeville, right on Lake Marion. And I tell you, that lake was, I couldn't see six inches into it. It was that murky. And everybody had the, mowed right down to the lake shore, and had that typical lake look like some people like to have when they come up here. And I didn't know any better. In 1981, I came up here with my wife to the family cabin. We bought it in 1989. And I got to say that when I bought it in 1989, I'll back up a little bit, I had to do a variance when we built. And Becky was, came out and told me all the things that we had to do. And I could see why sometimes you look at it and went, oh, come on, you know? But it all made sense. The more I, the more I learned about this, she really had a lot of things to say, and it made sense. And if you looked at our property now, we have 230 feet of lake shore. I put willow outle, you know, thanks to some of the Aiken County grants, everything I can to protect our lake shore. Riprap on that 30 feet that I have with a lot of buffer. We did a lot of natural plants. You can see I probably have about 20 feet of deep buffer on there, and it's really paying off because I noticed, too, one of the byproducts, I just said that the other day that we've got less weeds. Everything that's running off the hill, it's not running into the lake. It's being held. Everything that's coming up from the waves, it's being held behind the willow outle. Our soil right there, our 20, 25, 30 feet into the lake shore, there's very few weeds. I mean, so what we're doing, it's working, is what I'm saying. And those are the things, too, that education, that we need to get that word out to other people to save our lakes. And the reason why that I was a little concerned about it is because I have this, and actually, this was Mark came out to, Mark, this is what I said to you. You came out in 2020, dropped off some of these maps, and it shows the impaired lakes in Aiken County. And I looked at it, and I see Long Lake next to Dam Lake. I'm on Long Lake. It's just with a circle around it, meaning the lakes with declining water quality. And I thought, oh, my gosh. I didn't think that with Long Lake, but I'm not kidding you, my years on it, I've seen the lake decline a lot. And a lot of it's for, from, you know, the shoreline. We're not protecting it. We don't have the buffers out there. And now that, when I first came up here in 1981, of course, the biggest motor that was out there was a 25-horse. And now we've got 200 horse on the pontoons. So that has changed a lot. That creates a lot of wave. And as you can, and I'll pass this around. You can see it, but.
Thank you, Pat.
Today, I'm just holding it up, and I'll pass this around, too. Today, look at how many lakes are impaired in Aiken County. It's red. We got to, we have to look at doing something to do better than that. That was my disappointment in this, is that I look at Aiken County as being, as Becky said, too, out in the forefront. We're better than that. We're better than other places. We've got some, I would like to say, some of the best water around, and we don't want to lose it. I look at Lone Lake. We got, I think the president over there, Lone Lake, they've got 30 feet of clarity, and they're losing it. You know, it's not like it was. We always had 15, 18 feet of clarity. We're lucky to get 12. I mean, so things have changed. You know, they're, we're losing that pristine, look, my wife mentioned this, too, that when she first came up, she's been coming up here since birth, 1950, they used to drink the water in Lone, in Long Lake. And I said, really? And she says, yeah, some people pumped it out and made coffee, too, you know? So that's the difference that we were seeing. And so we've got, as Bob Carls said, save this for the next generation. I'll pass this around.
Thank you, Patrick.
And I know that a lot of people here have a lot more to say than I do, more knowledge than I have. And I'll say this, that when I first came up here, I didn't know this. You know, like, I've learned a ton since I've been up here, and especially with, you know, being tossed into the president of Aiken County Lakes and Rivers eight years ago, I think it was, you get involved with a lot of everything. And I think that the more you know, sometimes it's dangerous because you, because you almost react, and you got to say, I got to do something. So that's why I'm here today, that we don't want to go backwards, you know? And we need these for our economic development. And I know that you were wondering about people who build up here. Well, I'm one of those guys from the cities that came up here to build. And I would rather be here, believe me, than down on Lake Marion, you know, because I want this clean water. I like this stuff up here, you know? So I'm, I know that, I will say it this way, water connects us all. And anybody have any questions of me?
Just one thing. Aren't you going to put a plug in for the summit later today?
I could.
Here's your chance.
Okay. Four o'clock, Moose Hall. We've got a Lakes Association Summit. It's the first ever. You've probably heard us on the radio lately on it, advertising. We don't know, but let's do it. Let's just get some networking done. I got Mark Jeffers. He's going to give a little spiel about, I told him, too, I said, we want to hear about the riverboat days. We want to hear about McGregor's Wild Rice. And, you know, just tell the people that might come there that are, you know, from, not from here. And I, things have changed so much that, but there are still a lot of people that come up here on the lake, and they don't go anywhere. They don't come to town. They don't do anything. They stay up here, they stay their weekend and go back home. So if they're up here on Thursdays, Mark is going to fill that in. I've got Jeff Forrester, he's going to be doing it, too, giving us some updates on what's going on with lakes, clarity of lakes. So orders are free. I shouldn't say that because we've got, we had to put that aside on a budget.
No, I just want to, I had it on my calendar, and I'll see you there.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thanks. Thanks, Patrick.
Thanks, Pat.
Are there any further comments from the public, from visitors? Second call?
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Members, council chairman, staff, thank you for this opportunity to visit today.
And your name, sir?
My name is Dick Weber. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. I have the privilege of owning a small cabin on Big Pine Lake. Purchased in 99, my family, I married in two in 74, has had the old-fashioned log cabin from the 40s. And I brought my kids up here, my daughters, in the 60s and 70s and 80s. Now it's the grandkids, and I'm loving it. But I've seen changes, lots of changes. I didn't realize that sand pile on the bank that our kids played in when they were three and four was moving into the lake. Now my grandkids play in that same pile, and now I've got to talk to my brother-in-law about removing that. I'm not so sure I'm going to be able to do it, but I understand sand blankets and the damage they can cause. Having listened to Pat and our good friend Jeff Forrester, who you'll see this afternoon from Minnesota Lakes and Rivers, and by the way, water connects us all very clearly, very clearly. Just in the five years that I've paid more attention to our lake property and what's going on, seeing what invasive species, our little zebra friends have done, amazing in five years. What's going to happen in the next five years when the repercussions of these species take their effect, and the high oxygen levels, and the high plant life, et cetera, et cetera? I'll watch the clock also. But I just want to say that it would have been nice today if we could have possibly had some directory of sign-in so that you could advise us for the next meetings that may affect lakes and whatnot, sign in with our email addresses so we get advance notices. That'd be very much appreciated going forward. I'm watching carefully what you're doing, and I like the intensity and the enthusiasm you have towards it, and I appreciate it very much, and I thank you for that. Well, we have a chance to be a leader. Let's, let's try to do that. I think it's in your minds, and I'd love to see that happening. Yeah, the commons, we're about protecting each other's property, because my neighbor and what they're doing with these grand new lake homes, lake homes and these clear lawns down to the water, I know what it's doing. And when I talk to them about it, they say, well, you know, it's not a big deal. I'm just a little property owner. But they are a big deal, because in summation, we make quite a difference on the lake, add it together. So thank you for your time and consideration. I've learned a lot today listening to those folks before me. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk before you.
You bet. Thank you very much, Mr. Weber.
Water connects us all. Thank you all.
Commissioner LaVisca?
Is our sign-in sheet not back there?
No, I think Mark's going to get it.
Oh, he's going to get it. Sir, we will have a sign-in sheet coming. There, I thought there was one out there, but there will be one in here.
And since this is not an official public hearing, there will be public notices for the upcoming official public hearings, both on the planning and zoning level as well as the county board level.
Oh, maybe not. I can do something here.
Further public comment? Last call for any further public comment?
Tom Messinacorcel. My kids just call me Mr. M. Anyway, my biggest concern is on the definition changes. If you can get a copy out to some people, because sometimes you hide a lot in definitions and changes, and I want to just go over them, because sometimes things are hidden that all of a sudden it comes back to bite us the other way. And I want to keep it, Aiken leading as a good county that leads in shoreline ordinances. And we have to be careful how we put, and what kind of definitions we're putting in it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And again, Patrick Murphy, you and I, we had a conversation earlier today. With the upcoming meetings, the official public hearings, I'm sure that you'll send that out to all the Aclara members, which includes most of the lake shore associations. So there definitely will be, this was a committee, the whole meeting, kind of an informal but official board meeting without any decisions being made, just serving the purpose that they hear from the public. Yes, Pat?
Just one little comment, too. What we do is we have our lake reps, 20 associations who we represent, our lake reps. They do report back to their lake associations, and they do put it in their newsletters, the lack of what happens. So, yeah, we give the word out through a newsletter.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yep.
We did put some sheets out there if people want to sign it with an email for Andrew.
Outside the door?
It is outside the door. Thank you.
Yeah. Just let me, any further public comment before I remand it back to the board? Last call, further public comment? Okay, I want to thank each and every one of you for your attendance and for your input. With that, I'm going to remand it back to the Board of Commissioners for discussion, comments, and review. Commissioner Carney?
Thank you, Commissioner Carney, District 5. I will be attending your guys' meeting later, Pat, but I would like for you guys to think and let me know, how do you guys, what is your approach when you see one of your neighbors doing something that is an impact? What is your approach? Who do you call? No, I'll talk to you guys at the meeting and stuff. I don't want to prolong this meeting. But think about that, because we need to know, as Commissioners, what is your process as a lake association on how you report it? I'm not talking about tattletime, and how do you, how to resolve the situation? And I'll be over at your guys' meeting, and I would love to talk to you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner. Further comments, questions from Commissioners?
Sure.
Commissioner LaVisca?
Again, I'd just like to thank everybody for being here and being part of the process. And just to reiterate, as Chairman Whedel said, that there's no action taken today. This is just, this is something that, as a Board of Commissioners, we decided to do to get together and just to allow more public input to be, to be heard. So I appreciate people coming and letting that be.
Yes, and tell others, don't be afraid to come in and discuss, because we're here to help. We, I mean, you guys pay to have these folks help you.
Good question. If you've got questions yourselves, come to us.
Yep. Yep.
Aclara and MLR, Minnesota Lakes and Rivers, the two big, single largest entities that I know, organized representing property units. Please come to us. Thank you.
That's a good point.
Yep. I know I've been to a number of Aclara meetings and also serve in the aquatic invasive species, and I serve on the Aiken County Water Planning Task Force, which many of you, or some of you anyway, are on those committees as well. It's a lot to be learned.
And I think I sat on the relaxed watershed management group for, oh, my God. And I think I sat on the Malax Watershed Management Group for, oh my gosh, 15 years? I, now I have the one watershed, one plan for Malax, the Rum River. So I have a lot of different entities, so I'm not able to go to that meeting, but soon I will be coming back, hopefully in the fall.
And Commissioner Western brings up a good point, that one watershed, one plan, this is something that's been in the works for many, many years. I serve on the Brainerd One Watershed One Plan Board, and that includes like upwards of Palisade, all the way down to Morrison County. And one thing that's going to, from the Fonz a lot, from Bowser, the skateboard of water and soil, we'll be putting in a new culvert on Dam Lake. That, close to you Patrick?
And we have a Dam Lake representative right over here too.
Yes, it's in the works, let's put it that way. Our county engineer is working on that as well. But this is, again, is one of the positives that's coming from the One Watershed One Plan, utilization of state funds that can benefit our Aiken and adjoining county lakes. Anything else?
I think just about every commissioner's on a watershed.
Yeah, I'm Grand Rapids one watershed.
We have, I think, four?
Five, there's five of us.
All of us are on a watershed.
One or the other. Again, that's something that's been in the works. This has been talked about through Aiken County, the Conservation SWCD Committee for years. But it's finally in place now. Any closing comments?
I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out regarding the watershed committees that each of us sit on is, we're one of the few counties that actually have commissioner representatives on a lot of these watershed committees. So again, we do try to do our due diligence in making sure our waters are clean. And like I said before, my, one of my strengths is knowing what I don't know, and I'm learning a lot, so it's good.
I'd like to say something before we close this out.
Yeah, Commissioner Sample?
I've sat here and I've listened to everybody, but I think Becky bought out a point that we all have to remember. That not everybody lives on a lake. Not everybody does. And there are a lot of people that don't live on the lakes that have the same concern. So we keep talking about the lake associations. We need to get out and be better at getting the words out to our people that don't live on the lakes, that have the same concerns. On the, on the weekends, they go to the local lakes with their grandkids. They drive by the lakes. We have businesses, marinas, that sell boats. They're not the enemy. They don't want to see them lakes polluted. They make a lot of money test driving them boats on there. But I think that sometimes as we, when we sit and we look at the, like the shoreline ordinance, we need to be out talking to the townships and the people. And, you know, it says, the old saying, when I was a kid, is it took a village to raise a child? I'm living proof that it took a village to raise an idiot. But my point being is, that it's not just the lake people. Everybody owns the lakes, the taxpayers own the lakes. And we need to be talking to them too. Whether today, I got the idea that maybe I should be going to some of my chamber boards and talking about it, some of our city councils, and get that word out more. And Pat, I got your number, me and you are going to be talking, my friend. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thanks. Comments from the commissioners? Again, on behalf of the County Board of Commissioners, thank you very, very much for taking the time to be with us and providing your input for us. With that, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Westling, support.
House support.
That motion is supported by Commissioner Carney. No debate, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, the motion's carried, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you again, everyone.